Good morning, everyone. Be calling this Board of Commissioners work session for June tenth, twenty twenty-five to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, as the symbol of our heritage and of our integrity.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of the work session agenda. So a motion by Commissioner Medina, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Shally, do we have any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So moving into the next portion of our meeting is public input during this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on the future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Mr. Griffin.
Commissioners, much more detailed Wildlife Services quarterly reports this year, even one non-lethal relocation, thank you. I am Glenn Griffin and Eddie Flores is my commissioner. With nine thousand seven hundred dollars in claim damages from coyotes, fifty coyotes were shot for predation. Cougars and bears did slightly more damage at ten thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. The big difference is that no mountain lions or bears were shot. Work Task Force or WTSs in the reports were sixty-two WTs for coyotes and forty-four WTs for mountain lions and bears, almost equal. I have been speaking to the commissioners for nine years now about the Wildlife Services contract and mountains and lions, mountain lions and bears used to be shot for their predation and their deaths were put into the quarterly report. So what is happening with no bears or mountain lions killed, and I'm not advocating for that? I know that your Wildlife Service agent is also a hunting guide, has mountain lion-tracking hounds and reports forty-four wildlife work tasks for cougars and bears, but he only kills coyotes that prey on deer and lope and elk. And those completed cougar and bear task, work tasks are missing in your quarterly reports. But lions and bears bring in big bucks from trophy hunters. A guide in collaboration with public and private land ranchers working in agreement with Wildlife Services could make a killing if this was happening, as sport killers, trophy hunters pay up to six thousand to eight thousand for our mountain lions, especially if it is an easy kill and its location is known by the hunter's guide. Three hundred and fifty-eight lions were killed in the state last year, just not in Grant County by your agent. This trophy hunting could be privatizing public lands hunting, shutting locals out of public lands hunting while enriching those engaged in privatizing public land hunting. A quote from Gary Webb's Guide and Outfitter website mentions Brandon Jones's skill in tracking mountain lions. Friend and fellow lion hunter Brandon Jones was just a few miles away with another pack of hounds trying to help locate signs. I called him on his radio and he was on his way to put more dogs on the track. He caught up with a couple of miles and now he had eighteen hounds trailing. By the time it was all said and done, we figured the hounds had trailed this line a little over ten miles before we finally had them treed. Twenty thousand dollars in reported losses add a new contract cost of ninety-two thousand dollars for a one-third part-time Wildlife Services agent doesn't seem to make financial sense, does it? At one hundred and fifty-five dollars per hours for hours worked includes paid leave where commissioners paid eleven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents in unworked paid leave. How generous, a very generous contract compared to what you pay, well, let's say maybe county workers, county road workers. A cost benefit analysis says this is a waste of taxpayer dollars. Thank you for listening, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking?
Hi, my name is Candace Greenlee and I would just like to go on record as being opposed to our tax dollars being used to kill wildlife for any reason. I'm afraid also that there's a conflict of interest between the Wildlife Service agent with what he does for Wildlife Services and the fact that he is a private hunter traveler. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Good morning, my name is Christine Hess and my commissioner is Eddie Flores. As a child, my parents taught me to respect and love this earth along with all else we share life with, earth. She gives us all a home along with life to live. I find it increasingly distressing how New Mexico's incredible wild lives, the lion, bear, wolf and coyote are not appreciated, not respected how they should be. They have as much right to life as we do, keeping nature in balance, amazing how they survive a desert life, how incredibly disastrous that their lives are pretty much dictated by voices, needs and greed of ranchers along with their free-ranging cattle industry. And what is the New Mexico rancher's etiquette for these cattle? Throw these cattle out into the fragile desert ecosystem to free range, causing a terrible footprint and damaging impact on this land. Millions of public land acres severely impacted, almost free for the rancher and the cattle to inhumanely fend for themselves. Eat and drink what in this desert drought? Whose cattle have I heard for days again bellaring and screaming in the distance? Maybe Mr. Billings or, and I know, we all know what this sound means, great hunger and thirst. And when there's suddenly a death of a cow, the rancher cries out for reimbursement. Nobody else gets reimbursement if things don't go right for us, along with blaming his loss on the lion, bear, coyote, wolf, perhaps. And this brings the Wildlife Services agent, this service, what barbaric practices along with corruption and misuse of our hard-earned tax dollars. Wild service agents along with our commissioners should have special training, education on humane and protective practices. Sadly, most of the last commissioners group sided with the voice of the cattle industry and ranchers instead of humane relocation of wildlife at times. It was more important to hunt down and kill or use barbaric kill traps and M forty-fours for shame. Again, no respect or appreciation for our wildlife and I truly pray you as a newer group will be adopting a totally different positive mentality for our wildlife. It needs to be understood and protected. So a ninety-three thousand less than part-time contract to kill wildlife for the rancher and his cattle may be put in place? This is an outrageous overspending, misuse of taxpayers' dollars along with practices used. Fifty coyotes killed, I understand? Why? So perhaps there's more deer or whatever for the peeing hunter? Very inhumane. Coyotes do have a place on this earth as well. And am I understanding mysteriously, there, I've heard rumors that, and it's very questionable, there are, I understand, no lions or bears that have been killed. Hooray if that's so because I'm not advocating their death. However, I'm hoping that the Wildlife Servi- Services agent is not working with the ranchers and/or peeing sports hunters looking for the sports kill of lions and bear. So then also, why is such an agent hired?
You have thirty seconds.
Huge conflict of interest. An agent who is business as a hunting guide along with tracking hounds doesn't make sense. Huge conflict of interest. Ninety-three thousand, way too much. Luna County also interacts, the commissioners, with the people. We can talk with them, we can question back and forth. May you take up such as that practice too. Thank you for listening. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public input?
Yeah, good morning, my name is Arthur Ratcliffe. I was here last year for a hearing about this contract and requested a copy of the contract and was told that one would be sent to me after the legal people had looked at it. And I never got it and I just was somewhat disappointed that, of the trans, lack of transparency in this, if this is an open bid process, it should have been much easier to obtain a copy of the contract and, once again, I'm just disappointed in that lack of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public input? Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, it's be a presentation by your superintendent, Mr. William Hawkins, Silver Consolidated Schools update.
Good morning, everyone. I was told that I had two and a half hours to get this presentation done and I'm gonna do my best to squeeze all that time in.
Two and a half minutes.
I read that text completely wrong. So, Will Hawkins, Superintendent for Silver Consolidated Schools. What I wanted to do is begin the process of updating our community and our county on where we are as it relates to evaluating our schools, looking at a feasibility study that takes a look at all of our campuses, elementary, secondary, cliff, look at all of our student population and look at our, our past, our present and where we're projected to go in the future and then make some responsible decisions. What I wanted to do is speak with you today about where we are on that. I don't want to get ahead of our board as we have a board presentation coming up on the sixteenth, which will be much fuller. So I'm gonna talk about our goals, give you some background and context, I want to show you some scenarios that our task force looked at, the considerations that are going into that decision, I want to give you a projection of what the implementation could look like and next steps and answer some questions for you. First and foremost, we worked with a group called Capital AE, they came in and worked with us with our facilities master plan, they have historical experience working with school districts around the state and other states, but focused really on facilities master plan, looking at schools, looking at adequacy standards and really helping districts get to where they need to be. Our outcomes for this particular feasibility study, we wanted to look at what is the best strategy to efficiently use our spaces. We wanted to make sure that we had the best fit, evaluate our boundaries, we wanted to look at improvements that need to be considered if we are gonna have a conversation about consolidation. We wanted a recommendation, if possible, of what did we want to do with the facilities or spaces that might not be used? And then we wanted an idea of a timeline that we could share with the board. And I'm done, I'm kidding. So, he got really excited back there. Alright, so from a strategic planning process, right? We took the facilities master plan, if you recall, about a year or so ago, I came to you and I talked with you about the development of our facilities master plan and how we wanted to address the, the facility needs and building needs in our community, right? With our schools. So we went from the outcomes of that facilities master plan, we then started deep diving into the data that the facilities master plan gave us as related to our student demographics. We looked at the needs, what are the needs that we have at our elementary campuses and secondaries? We decided to go from there, setting a direction, a timeline and making sure that we had a good functional logical map to success. The committee itself, the task force was comprised of approximately twenty individuals, a little more, more often than not, it was staff, parents, school administrators, community leaders, board representatives. These are individuals who go to church in our community, shop at Walmart, who have sons, granddaughters, nieces and nephews in our schools. This is important because this recommendation or these set of recommendations from the task force come from people who are vested in our community, who understand our needs and recognize what our situation is and where we need to go. This is a break off smaller group from the original facilities master plan where we had over fifty folks over the course of a school year, bring all that information in, make a set of recommendations to the school board, and then we grab another twenty folks together to take those recommendations, specifically the dialogue of consolidation, and now give us direction. This is what this group said, can it be done? So that facilities master plan group had seven, seven goals that we looked at, from legislative issues, professional development, community partner partnerships, looking at our enrollment demographics, CTE, career development within our schools, technology, and of course, the number one issue, facilities improvement. As you know, from the last dialogue I had with you over the last ten to twenty years, we've continued to see a historic decrease in enrollment, this is not just Grant County specific, this is New Mexico and the country at large. We saw a two point four percent decrease of enrollment in the past ten, fifteen years. We are still seeing that two percent decline, but we see it leveling off between now and twenty thirty. With that data and with those recommendations, the facilities master plan was developed. Within that facilities master plan, there were five high-level things that the committee said, we really need to get done. The number one thing on that list was we need to right-size our elementary schools to align with our current and projected elementary, enrollment. What was made very clear, and I'll show you some data here shortly, is that we are not utilizing our facilities to the capacity it needs to. The reality is that the times that these schools were built and as they were emerging, we had many, many, many more students in our community. Unfortunately, you, as you saw a few moments ago, that decline in enrollment is leaving spaces, right? It also said that the committee said, we want to make sure we address Cliff schools. Cliff schools at the time was the eleventh worst ranked school facility in the state of New Mexico. It had continued to deteriorate despite our best efforts to maintain that school along with all the other schools with our current debt levy. The reality was, it was time, but we also recognized we could not afford to do that as a community ourselves. We wanted to make sure that we continue to maintain safe and secure schools, upgrade the Benny Fields because we really want to make sure we can provide world-class facilities for our students, and we also wanted to make sure we address the other needs of our campuses around the district. We went to the community and said we need to pass a bond. As you recall, it was a really arduous process, meaning if you got tired of hearing and seeing me everywhere, all the time, alright? It was a twenty-four million dollar bond with, with the understanding that when we pass that bond, we can then apply for a waiver, we'll be at ten mills, we can get the Cliff Schools project done because we would never be able to afford it any other time. We did, right? By doing that, we secured approximately an additional forty-four million dollars from the state. That forty-four million dollars is in essence going to take care of Cliff. You combine that with our SB nine at the time and our bond monies, that's a projected value of seventy-three million dollars over the next five or six years of projects being done in Grant County. Yay, the bond passed. Not so much with SB nine. Turns out, we didn't have as many people as I would hope, flip over the paper as we reminded them to also bubble in yes in their, in their answers. And so, go bond passed, we were still able to get to the ten mills, but SB nine did not. We applied for the awards that we needed specifically for Cliff schools, we started system grants like fire alarms as well as roofing out in Harrison, and we went before, or I went before, the PSCOC, got the waiver and we are well on our way. Right now, we currently have Decker selected as the architect group, we have a committee, design architect group, shout out to those who are on that committee, and we're beginning that process of designing Cliff schools. We will go back out to the community to address the SB nine issue. The reality is, by approving the debt levy bond, we're able to maintain a stable, steady, stable ten mills so that we're able to qualify, right? We're able to qualify for the waiver beyond the max and get that forty-four million dollars. However, because we don't have the SB nine maintenance levy, the day-to-day needs of the district will not be funded this year for, for projects. What does that mean? So for example, if we have an emergency plumbing, HVAC, if we have some assignment or issue that is not related to the facilities master plan, we do not have designated dollars to maintain schools. Remember, the state funds the learning, the actual process of educators, resources, programming, that comes from the state. But maintaining our buildings and the structures all the way around them, that is done at the local level. Those are conversations we had before. The solution to get back to SB nine is to renew SB nine as it was previously, make an adjustment to our debt levy and maintain at ten. Do not increase the taxes. What does that look like? Currently, we're at eight point five of the bond levy, House Bill thirty-three is currently at one point four, and SB nine, as you understand, is at zero, but we're at ten. By passing SB nine, what we will do is adjust our bond levy to six point five. Remember, the bond levy is how we pay back the debt for the bonds, right? So you generate dollars at eight point five, you're able to make those payments to get your twenty-four mills down and pay that off. By structuring that to six point five, we're still doing a heck of a lot better than we did back in twenty-three. If you recall, back in twenty twenty-three and before, we're at one point nine. We were making that bare minimum credit card payment where you're just not getting ahead. But by having it at eight point five and dropping it to six point five, we are really getting into that debt and paying that debt down. House Bill thirty-three continues to maintain our ability to do technology and other major projects and leases for the district. SB nine will allow us to get back to making sure we can maintain the schools that we're working hard with our project mills, our project needs, and still stay at ten mill. That's my pitch for the SB nine, by the way. Moving back on to consolidation, one of the issues or many of the questions that came up from the task forces, could it work? How would it work? What would be the best impact of the change? Is this going to be best for kids? Does it make sense and will the cost benefit be worth it? Alright, so there were several scenarios, I'm gonna focus in on three real quick, how am I doing there? Chairperson, Ponte, am I, am I doing okay? Okay. Alright, good, 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 good. Traditional schools, grade banding and middle school, high school, okay? So if you look through A, B and C, you see a red line through three and you see a red line through six. Immediately, we had to remind the committee, we are not having a conversation about Silver Scholars. I think in that recommendation from the facilities master plan, they said, hey, you could also move Silver Scholars into another facility. We said, no, we're not even gonna have that dialogue. Keep Silver Scholars where it is. And so what it came down to is, are you gonna consolidate one or two elementaries? And when you consolidate those schools, are you gonna keep them traditional, the way we see them now, K five or K six? Or do you want to grade band? If you recall, there were many of you who were here back in the day where you had grade banding, meaning all of fourth grade or fifth grade was at stout, right? Where all of one grade was over at Harrison. Who was here during that time? You don't want to show your age, it's okay, it's alright. I think, I think there was a few of us, not me, who was here during that time. But those are the two conversations that we had. Do we consolidate and what is the structure of how those schools look? Now, to go back to, to explain to you why we needed to have that conversation, I'm gonna quickly show you some capacity images of each of the campuses. In the blue line, you see that that is the functional capacity. This is how many kids could be in that building. The red line, twenty twenty-three, that was the previous year what we were at, and twenty twenty-nine is projected, in about three to four years, this is what that enrollment would look like in that site. So you can see forty-eight percent at Sixth Street, sixty-eight percent at Jose Barrios, fifty-six percent at Stout. Remember, watch that blue line, we're not getting closer with the blue line, we're getting further and further away. When you see that blue line in comparison to the red and yellow, that's the number of classroom spaces that are not being used. Put that into perspective, every one of us has probably dealt with a kid who's moved off to graduate or will move off to graduate, or someone who moved out of your house and you're like, yeah, look at all this extra room space we have. Now, we all know that when you have extra room space, that room doesn't just disappear, right? We move stuff into it, we become the new gym, the new library, the, okay, who am I kidding? No one uses it as a gym. The new, new library or the new whatever room they, that you want to use, right? So in our schools, these rooms aren't empty with just nothing happening, we've expanded into them. But are those spaces being used as they were intended for learning? Not in many of those cases. Alright, so you can see Harrison Schmidt, again, there's a, a better utilization, but still sixty-seven percent. You can see La Plata, woo, huge gap there, and Silver High as well. And that's a recap from the previous conversation when we talked about those numbers. Now, when we're looking at considering consolidation, we looked at the facilities. Educational adequacy, do these facilities have the necessary needs to continue and move forward? Looking at the boundary lines, we have some issues. We've got kids who live at Arenas Valley that passed two schools to get to their school out in Harrison. How do we address that issue? Looking at transportation, is this going to cost us more? Are we gonna have more stops, is this gonna create another issue of finances? Looking at our finances, will this save us money? And it's not just about the buildings, right? But being able to maintain them, wow, I am really cutting it short here. Staffing, please keep in mind, the number of staff we have are the number of staff we still need. So in this consolidation conversation, this isn't a conversation about cutting teachers because we have the number of teachers we need, we just have too many empty spaces that are not being used. Making sure that we can maintain high rigor with our academics and of course, making sure we can adjust our capacity so that our utilization rates aren't so low, we're getting the best bang for our butts in our facilities. We looked at the cost of where these buildings were ranked by the state, green represents the standards, basic replacements that you can do within a building, right? The, the green is good, red, not so much too good. As you can see, Jose Barrios and Sixth Street are the lowest out of what, seven hundred fifty-five, give or take, schools in the state of New Mexico. You can see that Sixth Street is number twenty-six, Jose Barrios is one oh two. That means that they have some significant needs already structurally based on range and what's going on there. We looked at the operational costs for all of our campuses, but specifically for Jose Barrios and Sixth Street. If I didn't mention this before, when we go back to the facilities master plan, that large group, their recommendation when looking at right sizing, they recommended Jose Barrios and Sixth Street initially. So when the task force came back together, that's where we started, right? When we looked at the data. We looked at everything, but logically it made sense to looking at Jose Barrios and Sixth Street. Looking at this, we saw that there could be potential savings of one point four nine five million dollars a year. So, current utilization is sixty percent. If you consolidate, you're gonna get between eighty-five to ninety-four percent utilization within your spaces at the elementary level. These are the data points that we talked about for traditional versus grade banding. I obviously don't have time to read all of those to you, but we looked at community connections, transportation, family convenience, class size balancing, specialization for staff. I really would love to go into dialogue, I don't have the ability to do that. We looked at equity of programs, making sure there's a sense of belonging, impact. We met four times for about six to seven hours, there's probably over two hundred forty slides of data. I had to narrow that down to you for about twenty-five to thirty, but these are elements that that committee looked at. We looked at the adequacy, if we went to K to five for Harrison and Stout, if we combined, if we consolidated those other two campuses, going from those sixties and six- if we combined, if we consolidated those other two campuses, going from those sixties and sixty seven percent, those different ranges, we get closer to seventy five to eighty two percent if we maintain those buildings at sixty five, excuse me, at K five campuses. If we grade band and we specialize one campus as K two and another campus at three five, you see that utilization goes up to ninety to seventy eight percent. I'm not a huge fan of that ninety percent, so I like to have just a little bit more room. We all like to have a little bit more room. But you can see that we're utilizing our spaces as they were intended much better when we have a conversation for consolidation. We also made the decision at the recommendation of the facilities master plan and with the recommendation of the task force to move sixth grade from the elementary back to the middle school. There's a whole wing of the middle school that is not being used, right? By moving sixth grade over, you get more space and more comfort back in your elementary schools. We also looked at addressing the boundaries of the district. As I said before, uh we had some areas that just needed to be looked at. Um, we looked at ridership, wanting to make sure that we didn't have any significant issues. We found from our um provider, Montoya Bussing, that overall, there wasn't gonna be a huge, if any, cost change. We may have to look at drop off times with about five to ten minutes. But overall, the same number of stops we have now will be the same number of stops we would have in the future. Think about that. We currently have Sixth Street that drop, that's part of that route for dropping off kids, right? If you don't have Sixth Street and you don't have Jose Barrios, but each bus has to go to each of those campuses depending on the scenario, you have the exact same number of routes. And so that, it didn't necessarily have a huge impact on that. And other considerations with financing, right? Our bond program, improvement, cost, attrition, what that could look like over the next five to ten years. Academics, making sure that we're able to create a space for teacher collaboration and curriculum. All the scenarios were evaluated closely, both K five as well as the K two, three, five scenarios. Preliminary findings was from the task force that yes, this is something we needed to do. Part of their dialogue and presentation that will go to the school board will be looking at the consolidation of those two campuses, right? Um, they deep dived in over two hundred forty different slides of data and information. Um, there was a lot of parents in that room. There were teachers in that room. There were community members who have historical experience um with our campuses, whether they grew up in Jose Barrios and their grandparents or their mom went to Jose Barrios or Sixth Street and all the evolutions that Sixth Street went through. Um, the key thing of understanding is where we are and where we need to go and recognizing you can't have it all forever. If, when we talk about successful implementation, these are the elements we're gonna be looking at. Our communication, transportation, curriculum, staffing, the training needed to make these uh adjustments. Facility needs, if any, um food, service, information, finance and budgeting. I mentioned boundaries and timeline. So from May, the final committee meeting, the Board of Education will get a presentation in a couple of weeks. In August slash September, it is my hope and expectation that the board will make an announcement for the decision. We pushed it out to August or September so that there would be no confusion. If the board came back in June or July and made an announcement that not this school year, but the next school year, this was gonna be the decision, everyone would lose their mind and they would start to think this is happening right now. And we just, we we didn't want that. Wanted everyone to just, when it happens, we're gonna have time. And so by making the announcement in the fall, when everyone is already in school, everyone knows that the dialogue is for the next upcoming year. Uh, we will begin the process for consolidation, communicating to staff, parents, students, setting up the 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 big work of what does it look like and how do we get it done? And that'll be all this next school year. In May, potentially, depending on the board's recommendation, you can see one, if not two, schools being closed officially. Um, any construction adjustments that one that we need or want to be made at either of those those campuses through the work of the bonds will be taking place. In August, you would see the schools. Now, I have prematurely there Schmidt, Stout, La Plata, those configurations. There's no guarantee at all what those configurations are gonna look like by any stretch of the imagination right now. And then, if you look way out into the distance, if you look at twenty twenty eight, twenty thirty two, there's gonna be a conversation. Part of the feasibility study really took took a look at what do we need to do as a district and as a community? Not just now, but moving forward. You you saw the capacity and utilization of La Plata Middle School and Silver High School and their aging. At some point, as a community, you're gonna wanna have a conversation about what do we really need to do? These schools that we have built, that you guys have our kids in right now, that we enjoy, these buildings are forty, fifty, sixty years, right? Some even much longer than that. At some point, the community needs to have a conversation as what does the next sixty or seventy years going to look like for Grant County? And what does education need to look like? And in twenty twenty eight, twenty thirty two, I think is gonna be the right time to start having conversations about what do we want our secondary education to look like for our community in the next fifty years? That's how these things get done for sustainability for our schools. I stand for any questions? I went over two minutes, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? You know, while they're maybe thinking of something, I I understand business is business. Um, you know, looking at your slide presentation there, Jose Barrios, the name on that school for it to be shut down is 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 you know, a little, little heart heartbreaking for me. You know, Sixth Street has a lot of history to it, you know, culture, how it came into Grant County. And I I don't know if you've heard me sort of like our our Grant County courthouse. That's, to me, that's the picture of Grant County of, you know, you're going to the town of Silver, uh into Silver City. You know, that's, that's huge. So you know, it bothers me. But at the end of the day, business is business and and I just wanna tell you that, you know, our job as commissioners is to support your school board. You know, your school board was put there by the people. They were elected. Those are the ones that that make the decisions for the schools. So we need to support them and and however we can support them and what they need, please let us know because that is our job. You know, I don't really like this overreach as far as, you know, they they're there. They're there to do a job and, you know, business is business. I mean, it's heartbreaking that some of the schools that we grew up in, or most of us in here did, I guess, uh grew up going to uh go that route. But at the end of the day, we we have to look at certain things, even as citizens. Um, you know, one thing that that I do, if if you look at this building, you know, I've always been for seven years as a commissioner, you know, our staff can't be working in eyesores. You know, we we put a lot of money into this building. Our county manager, our maintenance staff, our employees, you know, they get carpet, they get floors because I want them to feel comfortable and proud of where they work and what it looks like. Same thing, Conference Center. We put a lot of money into that, you know? We just put like one point four, I think, one point four million in the roof. That's something for a community to be proud of, to look at so they can have meetings, dances, rent, do this. So I see this and and I just hope that our citizens really look at, instead of, you know, seeing that we're slamming, well, you know, New Mexico's fiftieth in this, New Mexico's fiftieth and fifty first in that, that they come through and say, you know, our students do deserve better and better buildings and your staff, your teachers and everybody else that works around them also. So I hope they keep that in mind to keep us moving forward, to fix some of this stuff. So whatever, I mean, I guess I can only speak for myself. I don't know. Whatever you need help with or your board of uh your uh your board, just please reach out to me.
Commissioner Ponte and members of the commission, one of the things I would add is, from a historical standpoint, to me, it's gonna be vitally important seeing what we do with Sixth Street and what do we do with Jose Barrios. Now, it's no secret, we've had conversations with Aldo, who's gonna be looking for, right? And looking for a building. Is there a capacity and a pathway for them to possibly assume responsibility for a facility, right? Um, is there an interested uh entity that sees the historical significance of a Sixth Street? What that could be used for uh within the community? I think there's room for dialogue and hoping that depending on the recommendation from the board, that over the course of this next year, we're able to explore those. So from a historical standpoint, a community standpoint, those buildings don't you lose their significance and their heritage here. Um, maybe just transfer the responsibility of the maintenance uh in one way or the other, but definitely see the value in that.
Yeah, there's certain things here in Grant County that Grant County was built on. Regardless of what we're headed to or what people wanted to go to, Grant County is here for certain reasons and a lot of people put work into it. And I think that's part of Sixth Street to me. You know, that that really is, you know, Jose Barrios is just the name alone on that. So that's my two cents. Commissioner Stevens, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Superintendent. I just wanted to specifically express appreciation for the fact that you have um gone through this process in such a collaborative way. And also uh that you are trying to spend tax dollars responsibly and that you're prioritizing students' needs and education, which is obviously the mission of school. And um and third, I appreciate uh your encouraging the community to look at a long term vision. So, thank you.
Commissioner Medina.
Mr. Hawkins, great presentation. Just a quick question. Um, I have a teacher that's a, I have a daughter that's a teacher in Minnesota and we just got back from visiting her this week and she talked about consolidation. They just recently went to consolidating her classrooms and they talked about going from eighteen students to twenty five students, thirty students and so forth. And she talks about the disruption and and how classroom efficacy and everything goes forward. But imagine you probably looked into this. On the other side of it, um early childhood programs here in Grant County are very difficult to get into. You can't find a a spot. Have you guys reached out to the other early childhood programs and asked for the future as far as numbers and before we start closing schools and stuff like that, is how it's gonna impact you guys?
I'm in the, in Commissioner, Commissioner Medina, Commissioner Ponte, members of the commission. I can speak to it in general terms. I don't wanna go into too specifics, so I'll have those numbers right in front of me. But I can tell you is what Grant County's been experiencing in the last several years is what the Early Childhood Education Commissioner Group calls oversaturation of early childhood programs, believe it or not. They're basically saying with Silver Schools Program, with Montessori's Program, with the the church programs, with El Grito, you have so many opportunities that they started reducing the funds that go to these respective programs because there's not enough per pupil dollars going to each of these classrooms. So to your point, while we're saying we need all of these spaces for for our county, they're saying you have too many and not enough kids enrolled. We've had some conversations with El Grito. In fact, um, we're looking to have a partnership with El Grito and Silver out in Cliff um to help what we currently have. Because again, we've seen a reduction in funds, but we wanna be able to maintain programming in Cliff, just like we do here in town. So we're gonna work with them. Um, as we move forward with this project, one of the reasons why we said we wanted to keep Silver Scholars open and not touch it is for what you just said. We wanna make sure that we have enough early childhood spaces and programming classrooms to continue to maintain for our community. We are concerned that in in the next several years, we're gonna see that decline in enrollment. Um, I'm not sure how to make this plug, but it would be nice if we had more toddlers coming into our programs. Um, but that's our, there's a whole other science that that doesn't involve me in that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hawkins, thank you for the great presentation. Pardon me, I think it answers a lot of questions for for me and the community as far as why is Sixth Street gonna be closed down, what's the rumor with the uh Jose Barrios? But like Commissioner Ponte said, um, at some point, you gotta do what's what's best for the district. And I know that working with you in the past, you've always had that as your first priority. So thank you for the great presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Shell.
Mr. Chairman and Superintendent Hawkins, thank you. Uh, I just wanna make sure I understood uh you're moving forward with the architectural work for Cliff rebuild? And does the actual taking that all the way for through design, through construction depend on SB nine?
No, sir. So the the bond, uh the approval of the bond, that being able to apply for the waiver is is already completed. We did our first presentation and if I said it once, I probably said it eighty times while I was presenting to the commission that the completion of this project is gonna be dependent upon them being able to give us that waiver to to carry the heavy load. In essence, of our bond dollars, of the twenty four million dollars that was approved by our community, six million dollars of that is going towards this project and the remaining forty four to fifty million is coming from the state. That is, that process is already um moving forward. So the SB nine dollars is really about how we maintain the day to day, week to week projects of a school. When you think about the bond dollars, you're thinking about the facilities master plan document I showed you, where we said, these are major things we have got to get done that have continued to be issues in our in our campuses. And when you approve that, you said, you said your roof at Harrison needs to be replaced. So we're setting aside dollars for that roof. You said that you need to do work with your fire alarms at La Plata. So we've set aside these monies for you to do it. Now, what those monies won't do is if we have an emergency plumbing issue that backs up at Silver High School, like we did eight times or more this year, right? We don't have money, those bonds can't go into that if it wasn't identified in the F M P. That is what our SB nine dollars do. They allow us to maintain the day to day facilities, not just the buildings themselves, but out Benny Field and at Foxfield. And so when SB nine did not pass, in essence, this school year, we don't have dollars for when that, when when that plumbing goes out, we're gonna have to pull from somewhere um to try to uh get through the year. But understand, where we typically had a one point two, one point three million dollar budget to keep us maintaining our schools, that money is at zero. And that's gonna be really difficult. So throughout the year, parents and community, you're probably gonna hear, hey, why, why is this happening at this school? Well, why can't we get this taken care of there? Or really, we need to get this done over there. We don't have the dollars generated to maintain them. As I said before, and I so appreciate your question, the state says to local communities, it's your responsibility to maintain your, maintain and fund your buildings. We'll make sure you have teachers and books. You make sure the lights stay on.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good, good, yeah? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'll be moving on to county reports. I'm gonna start off with the airport, Ms. Rebecca.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, um just a few updates. I'm happy to let you know that we received two bids for our lighting project. Also, very happy to tell you that a local business got the the low bid on it. So Southwest Solar and Electric will be the contractor. We've put in all of our grant paperwork to the FAA and we're hoping in the next few weeks that we will get all that back. And hopefully it started, oh, maybe in the next two months. Uh, we're really working around fire season. So that project will require us to do some nighttime closures. Um, but we're gonna work around the schedule with advanced and uh any firefighting that we have going on. For training, Roger and Lauren Gonzalez got back from D F W. They did their annual live fire training. Uh, so we are currently have four fully certified R uh employees. And I I had a meeting with the FAA for a capital improvement uh plan that goes out for five years. And we have over eight point six million dollars uh in planned projects and equipment. And that's all. Ask them for any questions?
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on to our emergency manager, Mr. Scott.
Did you? Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. We've got a couple of uh brief updates on some of the projects I'm working on. First would be the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, the state approved it as it was and it's going on to FEMA to for for their viewing and approval. Hopefully, we'll have it back in the next few weeks to a month and it'll be on your agenda for approval hopefully by the end of the summer. I'm hoping sometime in August, July, August, I'm hoping to have it back so y'all can review it and approve it. Secondly, uh the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, we've moved forward with that. We've moved forward with that. Evaluation team met on the eighteenth, and we selected a contractor to, to, uh, update the, the plan, and it's, it's on the agenda. It's on the work session today, and it's on for y'all, for your approval, uh, on Thursday. As, um, with the, uh, Hazard Mitigation Plan for the generators, I'm hoping to have the RFP out this month, so we can get those generators installed at the, um, our, um, evacuation center. And I'm finishing up the, um, wildfire, the Community Wildfire Reduction Grant, the twenty-thousand we had for that, for community outreach. That should be finished up and closed out this month. On future projects, um, I submitted a grant on the ninth of, uh, May for generators for the two senior centers, the one in Cliff and the one in Members. And this week, I'll be submitting, uh, a grant, uh, to Freeport-McMoore for, uh, for their community investments funds, so we can update our emergency, emergency operations plan. And that kinda ties in, what I'm, what I'm asking for ties into what listed in your resiliency plan they did with the county last year. Uh, stand for any questions on the emergency manager piece.
Just reading some of this. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that I appreciate the detailed report.
You're welcome. And next is our code enforcement. And as you can see, we had, uh, two new citations issued this past month, and there's, we have eleven waiting for court dates. We had, um, five court dates and four pending dates and twenty-seven that we're still trying to follow up on. As you can see, some of the court dates, we had two gentlemen, uh, went to, uh, were, went to jail, were incarcerated for a few weeks because they, they were picked up on a, um, bench warrant for, for failure to appear. And what some of the stuff we're running into with some of the, um, follow-up cases, the judge now wants, um, a driver's license and a date of birth. So, sometimes trying to get property owners and trying to track down a date of birth and a driver's license can be difficult. So, that's why some of them, it takes a while sometimes, but they want both now. The judge wants, you know, the driver's license and a date of birth before they issue a citation. Um, and it's, the two gentlemen that went to, that pled guilty and did jail time, what's interesting is that they can go plead guilty and not show any proof that they've done anything to clean up their property. They can just plead guilty, pay their fine, do what they have to do, and move on. And one of the gentlemen there did the same thing. He told the judge he cleaned up his property, pled guilty, paid his fine, and moved on without showing any proof that he had done that. And sometimes that gets to be a little bit frustrating. Like I said, I stand for any questions when it comes to some of the code enforcement issues we're dealing with.
Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, um, Scott, but which, which judge are we talking about?
Judge Reynolds.
Okay, it's because, um, I know, one, uh, we do have the option to go to magistrate in Baird.
Okay.
Because it's, it's the same county. And I know in the state police, you have a magis, you have an option to go to either magistrate.
Okay.
However, the, maybe, maybe, I, I don't, I could talk to Judge Reynolds, but I understand the, the date of birth, but I don't understand the driver's license, because the driver's license is not required for a non-traffic citation, nor a criminal summons.
This is something new that's happened in the last month or so?
So, if I have a property that's, that's trashed, and I have a revoked license, I have no license. You can't give me a citation, basically.
The, the explanation that was given to Lily was, the driver's license provides a description of the person.
No, that's not true. And, um...
That's, that's, that's the explanation.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy, maybe, if it's, the commission wishes I could talk to Judge Reynolds and try to have a conversation with him, why a driver's license isn't required for a code enforcement citation. Uh, driver's license isn't required for a moving vehicle violation. You just get a citation for no driver's license. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, go ahead. That's what I was gonna ask. We, we needed to maybe sit down and, and talk to the judge, but go ahead and do that. Do you see any legalities in commissioners sitting with a judge or, because I've been wanting to do that, I just didn't wanna be calling, hey, can you guys bond me out? But anyway, it's a different story. So, yeah, no, go ahead, please. No, no, go ahead.
He's my neighbor, too, so...
Yeah, I'll go. Yeah, okay, set up. Anyway, anybody else? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I guess I'm just, uh, curious what we can do to, uh, close that gap about showing proof that improvements have been made. Um, 'cause that's frustrating, you know? We're not really out to get a fine or a conviction. What we want is the, the, the conditions that make the property dangerous to be fixed. So, um, I guess when you meet with the judge, that would be something we could advocate for is, hey, can you ask for photos?
Absolutely, yes. Right.
Right now, they're taking it as a word of mouth. Hey, I, I did this or I did that, and that seems to be suffice for right now, but I would like to see some type of proof that there is improvements going on with some of these properties. Be great.
Yeah, I would, yeah, absolutely.
Just a comment, Mr. ...
Go ahead.
It just seems like the judge, if, for proof, ought to ask the code enforcement officer if that was completed.
Yes, and she doesn't get a chance sometimes because they will go ahead and hear it without her presence or letting her know what's gonna happen. Again, it's all frustrating.
Shouldn't have done that, but to get in first, but, um, you know, and, and I, this goes, I guess, for Sharrina and you, but tomorrow, I believe at nine, I have a meeting with a resident to go look at, look at a property, and I don't wanna get into the location and all that. But if you guys could, uh, have either Lily or you, or one of you look at it, and I'll, I'll give you the address later. Brief me a little bit about what's been going on, so I don't just show up and, and not know really what, what the county's doing. I'd, I'd rather give her some answers while I'm there. So, I'd really appreciate that, just a reminder, if you know, I'll let you know. But, um, that's it for me, I guess.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our fire chief, Chief Groves.
Good morning, Chairman Ponte, Commissioners, staff, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. Before the meeting, I presented, uh, a can of water to you all, and I'd like to explain what that was about. So, we received on, uh, over the weekend, a pallet of canned water was delivered to the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. They had applied for the Anheuser-Busch Firefighter Assistance Award, I guess. And the water will be used primarily for rehabbing our firefighters at incidents. But in a, in a pinch, if we needed some water, uh, for different locations, we have a lot of cases of water that were delivered. I think we got somewhere, uh, between two and three thousand cans of water. And I gave you all a sample to have and to see what they look like, and hopefully, we will. I was looking at about four or five of them standing out there on the side of the road drinking a can of water, and I thought, well, yeah, that's nice. But it, it, it kinda looks like, you know, they're drinking something else. So, we wanna make sure there's no confusion there. But we did receive that, and we're very grateful. I think there may be a little write-up coming out in the daily press, as well as a photo. And, uh, to my knowledge, that's the second time we've received it in Grant County. Uh, Chief Rodriguez got it, I think, two years ago out at Fort Baird, so... Current projects, my, we're, we're still moving forward with our annual fire marshal inspections. We do have a new inspector that has been, uh, assigned to us, uh, from the state of New Mexico as our support services. He's, uh, and I know I'm probably gonna get his name wrong, but Peter, I think, is his Philip, Philip, uh, Rodriguez, out of Demming. And he had previously been the emergency manager for Luna County, and he was hired to, uh, take on, uh, this part of the state for our fire marshal inspection. So, he's our new contact person for our support services with the state. And, uh, he'll be around. He's done a few here, and they have to do an annual inspection every year of each volunteer fire department. So, that's what that's about. Been working on the equipment list for our new, uh, aircraft rescue and firefighting apparatus that, uh, I received an email this morning stating that we should be, uh, picking it up, inspecting it, and going to pick it up sometime toward the end of this month. So, uh, hopefully, by early July, we'll have a, our, our truck located at the airport and fully functional, uh, which will give us two. Our, we're still currently, it, it's a work in progress, uh, with our incident command teams for larger incidents. As we have had a few, uh, we find things that we need to improve on, and making sure we're, we're accounting for all of our firefighters and personnel on scene. That's a big concern, uh, particularly at night when, um, we may have people out and we need to know who's, who's actually on these scenes. So, we've moved along, uh, made great strides with that, with our accountability system, and got some fine tuning, but it's going well. I do have a new stipend policy that we'll be probably presenting to you later this month or, or very early in July for the, uh, new stipend policy for volunteer fire departments. I have an appointment with Sabrina Humphries at the radio station tomorrow to continue with some, uh, PSAs for fire prevention, and also fireworks will be covered in some of these PSAs. And, uh, continuous response with fire suppression and emergency response, uh, some future projects that we're, we've got, um, we're also ongoing projects, but we're continuing with our training with municipal fire departments, getting to know each other, spending some time with those folks, and developing some rapport with some of the different crews and teams there. And our training program is still moving forward. I have a meeting with the state trainer, with the trainer who's from the State Fire Academy, Mr. Luis Bencomel, for this district, this section of New Mexico, Southwest New Mexico. And we will be finalizing and bringing some training, uh, dates and different, uh, topics to our VFDs here very soon, so... And that'll be available to, to every fire department in Grant County, or even outside of Grant County if they wanna send some people. For the month of May, we picked up a total of, uh, five new recruits. We had two for the Pinos Altos, uh, Whiskey Creek Fire Department had one, and Sapiro Creek had two. And since then, Sapiro Creek has submitted another two. So, um, things are, things are moving forward in a positive direction, and I was happy to see that we're getting some new applicants coming in, particularly in areas like Sapiro where our numbers have been down. And, uh, it's good to have some, some folks getting involved and, and, uh, signing up to be members of our VFDs. So, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Chief, on Friday, believe it was Friday, I had a meeting, um, I attended a meeting. There's a couple of questions that were asked. Is the number of volunteer fire, I don't need the answers right now, if you could get me something, or even email it to all the commissioners. The number of volunteer firefighters we had in Grant County, and I know you've mentioned it, somebody's mentioned the number off the top of my head, I, I just couldn't, couldn't pull out that number. The other concern, and, and I'm, I'm, you know, that probably needs to go, and, and I don't know, but I think it needs to go to our representative, uh, DeRasas and our Senator Ramos, is there was some questions as far as their PERA, and, you know, they do so many years of service in volunteering, and I know we approve them, sign the paperwork on them, I, I think, right, we vote on that, that after so many years, at the end of the, they're, they're, when they get ready to retire, they're only making like a hundred and seventy or so a month for that. I, I'm not sure how that formula works. I'm not sure if it works through, uh, the numbers of hours that they volunteer. I, I don't even know what our contribution really is, uh, if we do, but I think we do need to work on that, because I, I think that's gonna help some of our, our volunteers that they're presently, uh, you know, volunteering, because at the end of the day, that, that is something that, that they, uh, look forward to, especially if they, I'm not sure if it's twenty-five years, thirty years, that they have to go. I, I, I don't know all that, but I, I'd really like to know, and I'd really like to push that as far as, uh, looking into that, because we are struggling with EMS in the rural community, especially, you know, volunteers, we're struggling with firefighters. And, you know, we look outside, and, and they're really gonna, I hope not, but with this weather, they might be earning their money, uh, really earning their money this year with, with what we have out there, the drought conditions. So, if we can, uh, if you can get me some of that, or, or, or Sharrina, that way I can pass it up north to, to the person that was asking these questions.
Okay. I can answer it now, or I can provide, provide it in an email?
Just throw me an email, because I'll forget by the end of the day.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Chief Groves, just, it's not a question, I got a request. One of my constituents in Indos Gregos, he's been, um, re, reaching out to SC, Silver City Fire Department. He's concerned because he's, uh, hasn't seen anybody do any flushing of the, of the fire hydrants out in that area.
Okay.
And that's what I'm, the information I'm getting from him. Obviously, we don't want something that happened in California where those hydrants haven't been serviced, and there's an issue, and then they turn them on, and there's no water. Could you maybe just do me a favor and connect with Silver City Fire Department and your colleagues there, and maybe get an update, or give me an update as to if they've done it, or when they plan on doing it, so that I can let my constituents know?
I will do that, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Shell?
Mr. Chairman, Chief Groves, I just wanted to thank you again for, uh, the great information that you provided and others at the meeting last week on, uh, fire preparedness. And, uh, I, there were a lot, quite a few people there. I was impressed at the turnout, and it seemed like most of their questions were answered, but, and great information was shared there, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Moving on to, uh, finance. Sandra?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'll be brief today. We're still in the middle of our Tyler system reconfiguration. We will finish that tentatively mid-August. And we have the life, um, representative coming back again in June to wrap up the HR portion of it. Our JP Morgan P-cards have all rolled out. We held three trainings last week on the P-card program, so if you weren't able to make it, please reach out if you have any questions regarding that. We're still working on our final budget submission due at the end of the month, or coming up at the end of the month. Um, our preliminary budget was submitted to DFA. Our staff has been training on the fiscal year-end pro, close process. We've all taken classes, and, um, Betty has successfully completed our chief procurement officer through New Mexico Ed. She's our certified CPO right now. Sam Hernandez and Chris Allison, they've completed payroll training through Tyler, that was a week-long training, um, as well as some of the, um, fiscal year-end closings. So, everybody's been training. I also did the procurement and... closing. So everybody's been training. I also did the procurement and general ledger, um, fiscal year close training yesterday. So I'm very thankful to the staff. Everybody's working very, very hard every single day. I want to thank Mary Ray, Bry and Michelle and, um, Nikki. Everybody jumps in and are a great team and I'm very appreciative and especially Charlene. She's a great leader and she's always there for questions and she's, I can't say enough good about Charlene. With that, I'll stay, stand for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you. Moving on to planning and capital projects. Mr. Olgu.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of projects, of course, that we have under, under construction. Of course, the North Hurley roadway project, that's complete. They're just doing some punch list items and cleanup there. So it's going to be really nice to get this one off the books. We had so many conflicts with some unforeseen circumstances, uh, Shelby Utilities and, you know, just, of course, wanted to do our best to make sure we got the, the folks out there, what they, what they needed and so much needed improvements in that area. Uh, for the public safety building, a lot of that right now is behind the scenes work, just working with, uh, the contractor or the architect, rather, and doing coordination calls with them. We will be having some upcoming coordination calls with our facilities department and IT to make sure that that building and the infrastructure installed meets those standards. Um, I know that that's a big thing for, for Mr. Lockett to make sure that public works and they have that oversight without, that they have the same thing in every location they can. Um, for the courthouse renovation, um, thank you for the questions and comments last meeting. We did have a conference call with Warden Nandezola and, of course, Judge Hofackett. So we went through some logistics questions that you guys had brought up last time. Uh, Warden Nandezola seemed really comfortable with, with the arrangements and the floor plans that were laid out. So it was excellent discussion point from there. Regarding Franks and Crum Road, and I realize that I spelled Crum with a B. I'm sorry about that. It's C-R-U-M. Um, we'll be getting into the point where we're going to be passing those drawings over to our road director. He'll have the opportunity to review those drawings and then make recommendations if there needs to be adjustments from there. So, you know, between public works, road department and, and planning, we really try to create this fabric where something that's being planned in my department, we know it's going to influence the others, so we want their input along the way. So just wanted to make sure you guys know there's a lot of cross coordination going on between those. For future projects, uh, Ridge Road, uh, we're trying to make this strategic decisions about how we're going to deploy these three colonialist projects. So it doesn't make sense being that we have such a limited pool of construct, uh, contractors in this area that specialize in that kind of work. We're going to stagger that approach a little bit. So Ridge Road is a hundred percent ready to go. We're working on a schedule right now with our engineering consultants, and as soon as that's put together, we'll start coordinating with constituents along that roadway. So they're aware of what's going on with that project and what can, interruptions in a timeline that they'll be dealing with. For Little Walnut and Arenas Valley, we have some roadway and easement conflicts that we have to sort out on there. Um, years ago, when that roadway was established, some of those things weren't clearly delineated. So it's just a little bit of housekeeping on our side. All right. We get a little gift after the facts, but we're going to go ahead and get that sorted out. Regarding, uh, key dates, I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Medina for letting us tag on to his, his, uh, public meeting in, on May 21st. The seniors, uh, in that area, in that facility, they were incredible to engage with. I was telling Charlene it was very eye-opening and wonderful. Our community members are extremely aware of what we're doing. They ask a lot of questions, a lot of very detailed questions. So it felt great to be able to provide them with, with the information they were looking for. Um, and then I did get a couple of phone calls afterwards on keeping a running log of every phone call, email that we're receiving from these folks and then making callbacks as well. And then along those ICIP meetings, of course, tomorrow, 10 o'clock here, we're going to have the Silver City meeting, and then, uh, Thursday at 4 o'clock at the Cliff Fairgrounds, the exhibit building, we're going to have a meeting out there. And, uh, Commissioner Flores was, was good enough to facilitate that and, and be a participant there. Of course, all of you are welcome and, uh, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to, uh, public works, facilities, uh, maintenance. Mr. Jason?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I bring you the, uh, public works, facilities, maintenance report. Under current projects, you can see in the front, the admin building, front portico resurfacing is complete now. Looks very nice up there compared to what we used to have. Uh, the shower epoxy project at the detention center is about 75% complete, only lacking about four more showers over there. Next month's report will show you some, uh, pictures of some before and after. Uh, we're, uh, right now, tomorrow, we will be pouring three of the six Corte Caminos bus stops for, to get the rest of those, uh, bus stop shelters in place. Uh, assembly of the Cliff, uh, park picnic tables. We're also, uh, detention center painting continues, and we're also putting together that, uh, bleacher, uh, that's ADA accessible for the fairground show arena. Under future projects, conference center hallway facelift. You also see the admin building employee designated outdoor space coming soon. Uh, detention center training mock cell door installation. Uh, admin building signage is still in the planning phases. Uh, our detention center laundry, uh, remodel replace is getting ready to start as well as soon as this, uh, shower project is complete, uh, along with those, uh, bus stop shelters. Under notable accomplishments, you can see we have the courthouse, uh, sweep and striping. Have some pictures of that at, at the end of this slide. Uh, Heeler Senior Center, entire grounds trimming and chipping. So we were able to trim some trees out there that needed, um, they were in desperate need of trimming. We were able to get that mulch after we used the chipper out to the, uh, for the rice program to, for their greenhouse. Also, the member senior center, we had a concrete slab and put, uh, did some tree wells out there for a gazebo that was going to be installed. Um, we've located a, a septic tank out at the Cliff, uh, fairgrounds. Um, also doing, we also did a, a security door install at the Department of Health at Silver Street. Stand for any questions?
No, keep going.
Then under the, uh, county fleet maintenance, for may completed projects, you will see 14 oil changes and inspections that were completed down there. We had a one air conditioning recharge, uh, two blades had the cutting edges replaced, seven units had tires replaced, did a wheel alignment, had one set of shocks installed, two complete brake jobs, window regulator, and many other miscellaneous repairs that, that happened throughout so many vehicles that we have down there. Um, just want to thank all the staff in facilities maintenance and the fleet maintenance for all the hard work they do for Grant County. And I stand for any questions.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Jason, for being responsive to, to my calls. Were you able to meet with, with Russ there in Cliff regarding the, the tennis courts down there?
No. Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Flores, we have not, uh, made a date yet. Um, it's in the near future though, that we're going to get out there and see what we can do to help him out.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. And the other question I have, um, I know I brought it up probably a couple of meetings ago. Uh, were you able to do any of the mowing up there at the right of way in Dos Gregos area? Uh, I talked to a constituent, uh, probably a week ago. They said it's still, there's still a lot of weeds on the, on the right of way there.
Um, well, uh, I can look into that and I can get with, uh, with Mike and see if we can maybe get them over up there.
Okay. Will you just keep me updated?
I can.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, my name is Mike Rockwell. I'm the new county road director. Um, just wanted to go over some of our current finished projects that we've been doing. Um, we have a little bit of li- li- excuse me, limited manpower, um, but our equipment operators have been, uh, prioritizing the maintenance of county roads according to safety and, and the complaints that we've been receiving. Uh, currently, they are assisting with ongoing projects that we have to finish. Um, laborers are engaged in trimming trees, performing patchwork, assisted with ongoing projects across the county as needed. The Johnny McDonald project, low water crossing is progressing well. We've got all the concrete laid there. As you can see, the, that's the last lane right there on that slide. And then on the next slide, uh, it shows the turned down sidewalks, or not turned down sidewalks, turned, turned down walls to prevent the water from going into the crossing. They've got those completed. Basically, all we have left to do on that is put some rip rap on the, on the bottom, on the downstream side of it to prevent erosion, and then we'll be able to go ahead and open that road and do away with that detour and open that road back up. Um, that one should be done in the near future. Um, and we're continuing right now to do shoulder work and prep for all of our chip seal projects. Um, there's another slide, right? Okay, I'll get to that one in a minute. We got, that one, we're shouldering right there and getting ready for the chip seal projects. That's Motales Road right there. But, uh, we have a lot of other roads around the project that we're doing the same thing to there. And then if you'll go back to the, that one right there is actually Franks Road. Uh, that's been a chronic problem road going up that hill. We actually added some material to that. Uh, had the water truck up there to, um, mix with that, uh, material, to lay it down, and we had the roller, roll it in, rolled in with the water truck also, and it seems to be holding up very well. Um, I wish I could do that to every problem area in the county right now, but do the limitation. I just can't take the water truck and have it there for two or three days on site. We're, uh, but we'll do that as time permits. Um, right now, we do have, uh, blades out in some of the problem areas with blading, and due to the lack of moisture in the ground, the roads are beating out pretty quick. Uh, like I say, we'll try to address the worst places as we can. And, uh, we're, we're limited on operators. We did hire a couple of operators here just a week or so ago, and, uh, we're currently going over with them, assessing their abilities and what training they need to get them started to turn them loose, but we are, uh, working on that. Our future, future projects, we're going to continue to move forward with our special projects, our capital product, projects over the next few months. Um, we're focusing on addressing, on addressing complaints and resolving those issues so we don't have to go back and do it again. But, uh, it's going to be, take a little time. I just remind the community that try to be patient and vigilant regarding the road maintenance during the routine blading. Lack of moisture, like I said, is, is a problem keeping things from beating out again. There's going to be certain areas where I can put the water truck there and process that material and lay it down. It'll last a little longer. Um, like I said, we're under, we're currently short-staffed and to staffing changes, but we're bringing people on. We have some, uh, training outlined, and so we should be moving along more rapidly in the near future. And I think that's all I have. So hoping for questions.
Mr. Rockwell?
Yes.
Uh, congratulations for coming on board. I know you're going to do great.
Thank you.
You know, worked with you in the past and you have great worth ethic and a lot of experience in this. So congratulations. We appreciate you coming on board. I want to, it's so weird. This morning, I ended up with, with this, uh, text message. I'm not going to read it all. It's very, very long, but, uh, just said, "Good morning, Chris. Uh, hope all is well. Thank you for the work ordered out at Crum Road about a month ago. The hill going up to our neighborhood is, is in amazing shape and we're very grateful." Also want to bring up the fact that there are only two or three sections of Crum Road that get torn up significantly more than the rest of the road. The first mile and a half of the dirt road from the pavement is one of the areas that gets pretty bad, possibly because of people, uh, folks driving upwards of 30, 40 miles, uh, an hour sometimes. Let me see here. There was another piece in here that... So I just want you to be able to communicate the right message to the road, county road, just here, and just want you to be able to communicate the right message so that when you pass it on to the county road workers, uh, they do it right. And because of the doc, uh, because they did a great job on the hill, I like to bring out all that news dirt. So there, and, and there's a lot more to it that, that's there, but, uh, I really appreciate what you guys have done on, uh, Crum Road. I know it's, it has been an issue since I've been commissioner, get probably calls once, twice a month, maybe even more. But somebody's acknowledging that you guys have done a really good job there. Um, I will pass on to the sheriff about the speeding in that area, but just appreciate it and tell your staff thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. It's not very often we get a call from this, so.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Rockwell? Thank you.
Thank you.
County manager, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you are all aware, HMS provided a 60-day notice terminating operation of the four senior centers in Grant County, Hila Members, Santa Clara, and Towne Silver City. Um, we had a meeting scheduled, uh, with AAA prior to receiving that notice. So we changed the focus of the meeting yesterday. Um, Andrea, myself, Alex Brown, Sheila Hudman, uh, Hidalgo County Manager, Tisha Green, the mayor of Lordsburg, met with, uh, AAA yesterday along with representatives from, uh, Aging and Long Term Services. Uh, AAA continues to, uh, provide their support and encouragement. Uh, we don't know what our next steps are going to be. They, they have approached the county to, to look at operating the services as we did prior. There's a lot of information that they're going to put together, uh, to give us, uh, starting with, um, some realistic operating budgets as, um, as the senior centers operate now, as well as some staffing plans, um, what they see typically based on the volumes and the units of service that are, um, turned out at each of those centers. So it'd be a little bit more realistic, uh, picture. So we should have that by the end of the month. Um, the, uh, Alex, myself, uh, Sheila and Andrea are meeting tomorrow afternoon to really do some deep dive into what we can do locally, how we can put this, uh, back together and provide, um, the services for our seniors that they deserve. So AAA continues to say, no matter what, um, they will, they will be fed, um, one way or the other. It might be home delivered for a while, but we just need to continue to provide that reassurance to our seniors that, um, we will take care of them. So we just want you to know that all of us are collectively working on this very hard and we'll do our best to bring something forward that works. That's all I have.
Yeah, I was going to save some of this for my, uh, for, uh, my commissioner comments, but since the senior center came up, um, you know, I, I, and I think all of you received an email, and, and it starts off with, "Good morning. I real- I realize that next week is very, very busy for y'all, but would like to invite you to the senior Hila Center on June 12th." Mr. Ted O, Mr. Holmes from HMS are having a public hearing for us to participate in planning and the operation of community-based services programs. I'm not going to read the rest of the email, but, um, I had asked, and, and it, it, I guess it's in the news, it was in, I'm assuming newspaper. I'm not sure where this article came from. Had her send me, uh, this thing, Hila Center, uh, I believe it's 403 Highway 211, Hila, New Mexico, June 12th, uh, 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. You know, and, and sort of what is a little bother, bothersome to me in this is, you know, when you have an idea that you're not, you're going to terminate the contract of the senior services and then you go ahead and put up, uh, whatever you want to call it, town hall to have a meeting to talk about community planning or, or what's going to happen to senior service, you know, I don't think that's right. You, you know, especially with him terminating the contract with, with, uh, Grant County and probably the, you know, Towne Silver City, Santa Clara. So, um, you know, my opinion, I mean, if, if they're going to show up and blame, you know, because I think I read an article where they blamed our, our representatives or they br- blamed the state, which I'm taking as our representative and, and our senator for the funding. And if we're going to have a meeting June 12th or he's going to have a meeting June 12th, to put that on there, to blame everybody else, I, I don't agree with that. I really don't. You know, if you know you're going to terminate the contract, this probably had went in front of his board. I hope it went in front of his board. If he just made the decision, why are we having a meeting June 12th? You know, because there is no more planning. The planning and the opportunity that they had to work on the ICIP for them, they did it. Our commissioners took it and we, we had to do it. You know, so if it's planning, I don't know what he's planning because it's coming to us. Um, I just don't want the community to have a sense of, uh, "Hey, we're here. We're going to plan with you." Uh, un- unless, you know, their PR department or whatever is saying, "Yeah, go ahead and do this." I don't know what we're going to gain from it because I think the public needs to be aware of. Well, aware of, well, you're not going to be running these no more. What are you planning? They need to come to us so we can plan whatever we need to plan and take it further. You know, I just don't want these meetings to turn into some type of blame. You know, well, we didn't do this because, you know, I can tell you right now, our governor, our lieutenant governor, Senator Ramos, and Representative DeRosa is not going to let something like this just happen. You know, they're going to support these programs as best as they can and how they can. So I'm a little... I'm wondering because it's not like you wake up one day and say, we're not going to do this. This is, you know, I'm sure that it has been in the works for a while to terminate those contracts with us. You know, going a little further into that, what I'm a little bit... You know, we have two contracts, or I guess we can say we had two contracts. Here soon, we'll only have one contract with HMS. You know, it's Tu Casa. Are we going to get the same treatment with Tu Casa? You know, is it time for this board of commissioners to turn around and say, we need to terminate the contract in Tu Casa before so it could go into the hands and it could be brought into another company to run Tu Casa? Tu Casa has not worked, at least for seven years. I think it need... Tu Casa needs to go back to the basics. So I think as a board of commissioners, we need to hear real soon, hopefully take a step back and look at what we can do. You know, some of the public tells me, well, what's going to happen to some of the clients that are... Well, you know what? I think HMS has plenty of room. They can take their clients to their facility and continue to work with whatever they're doing. You know, I think Tu Casa would have done very well. This is my opinion, my opinion only, but I think there was some management, micromanagement in there that didn't let it be as successful as it could have been. We had an awesome doctor running Tu Casa, and for whatever, it didn't go. But so I'm asking our commissioners, let's look at Tu Casa before something like this, and it just gets thrown at us, and we start getting blamed for how, why it didn't work or how it didn't work. And I think that we need to push forward. You know, what... A little bit of also what's bothering me is, you know, and I would never do that, is how do you put one person in front of our community and the health of our community? You know, that's... Doesn't work for me. And I know that I'm getting, you know, to the point of, and I continually do this. My job as a commissioner is to support our public, to support the programs that we have, to make sure that the people get what they deserve to get. But here we are, you know, and to blame certain elected officials for certain things, I don't sit back and take that very long. And you've been able to tell that for so many, I don't know how many meetings that you've done this, but I think commissioners, my opinion is, we really need to take a step back. I don't know if we need to have an executive session. I don't know what we need to do, but we need to provide services in the area of substance abuse behavioral health and mental health for our citizens. We have the perfect building to do it, and I think we really need to take a hard look at that and for us to start doing it. That's to all of you, but it is what it is, and I got it off my chest. Does anybody have anything else to say, commissioners? Thank you, Sherman. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
No? And I get worked up on all this. Support my app.
Review the agenda.
The review of the regular meeting agenda, county manager, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, in front of you have the agenda for June 12th. Public hearing to determine fireworks restrictions. Staff recommendation has not changed. The county continues to remain in extreme drought. Basically, ninety percent of the county is in extreme drought conditions. So we would recommend that you continue... Continue to enforce those. And I misspoke, exceptional drought.
Sherman.
Yes.
Let's take a two-minute recess because I want to be most part of this.
Sure.
Two-minute recess. Two-minute recess. Back on.
So moving on to presentations, we have recognition for the Cobre High School Lady Indian softball team for their state championship, as well as the Silver High Lady Colts softball team for their state championship. We typically do that when we have our high school teams represent as well at the state level. Also, under presentations, Sheriff Villanueva has requested to have a budget review. You will have your regular report from Robert Whitaker, GRMC CEO. Under the consent agenda, you have the May 8 regular meeting minutes, May 22 regular meeting minutes, the June indigent healthcare claims, as well as the Safety Net Care Pool payment program. Any questions on any of those items? Okay. Moving on to new business, item G, appointment of an ex officio member to the county livestock loss authority. As you recall, several months ago, we wrote a letter requesting to become a member of the joint powers agreement for the county livestock loss authority. The language in that joint powers agreement states that there has to be an odd number of counties. We would make... They approved letting Grant County join. However, we would only be able to be an ex officio member because we would make an even number of members. So they've consulted with their legal counsel and would like for Grant County to appoint an ex officio member that would participate in the meetings, basically would be included in all discussions, including any executive session topics, just wouldn't have a vote. So they wanted to make sure that we would be up to speed on all of the things that they're working on in the event that another county joins, then we would be able to understand all of the inner workings. So that's the request, is to make that appointment.
So are you done with that piece? Sorry. So you know what I'd like to see, and I'm just going to recommend this to our board for Thursday, but I'd really like to see Commissioner Flotus be put on that. And then I'd also like to see, and I don't know how this works, but to have Commissioner Shalley as an alternate, just in case Commissioner Flotus can't do it. I don't know what their roles are as far as alternates and all that, but anyway, we've done that, and we have an alternate in case it is allowed. So, and, you know, by all means, if you guys have any other ideas, please say it. That's just the recommendation, something that I'd like to see.
I thought there was a motion on that already. Can we reapprove that? For Commissioner Flotus?
I don't believe we made an appointment because we were waiting to make sure that our request was approved. You talked about it, but...
I think we voted on joining, right, or doing whatever. I think that's as far as we got. Anything else on this one? Okay.
Item I, appointment of trustees to the Hila Regional Medical Center Board. We have two vacancies, and we've received four applications. The deadline is today. We stretched it out as far as we possibly could. If we receive any more applicants, then Mary Ray will send that out to you at the end of the day so that you have time to review those, to consider making those appointments on Thursday. So two vacancies, and they will be for three-year terms. And if you haven't checked your emails, the ones that we've received, Mary Ray sent those out to you in a Google link. Next, item I, we need...
Hold on. Do you guys have any questions on that?
Oh, sorry.
Or anything? Comments? Nothing? On... Oh, go ahead.
Moving on to item I, we need to reapprove the 2025 works... Work meeting, work sessions, my goodness, work sessions and meeting schedule. So we made a mistake in November. The work session is scheduled on Veterans Day. We're closed on Veterans Day, so we need to have you reapprove the meeting schedule and republish that. Typically, what we've done in instances like that is combine the work session and the regular meeting. So it just all becomes one meeting. So that would be our recommendation, and then we will republish that meeting schedule so that it's correct for the public.
Would you guys feel comfortable doing that, or do you want to discuss it more Thursday? So we'd have a combined work session and regular meeting would be the 13th or so, and then we'd still have our... Then we don't have a meeting at the end of the month because of the Thanksgiving holiday, right?
Right. So we only have... We only do one meeting, or one set of meetings in November and December due to Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like a appropriate move to make up that work session from my Sorry.
No, whatever you guys want.
Commissioner Shalley, you mean, when you say make it up, you mean combine it with the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, sounds good to me, too.
It's a lot easier on staff, too.
Okay. Next, moving on to item J, we would like your consideration of approving the Southwest... Let me get their exact name. This one makes me tremendously excited, I just have to say. Southwest Contracting and Associates to utilize a statewide price agreement for post-fire flooding repair mitigation services. We're finally getting to the repairs from the Black Fire several years ago. What this is, is they... That statewide price agreement is an hourly rate for each task that is conducted. We are... We have all of the NRCS cost estimates for each one of those projects, and so this would allow us to move forward and get that work done. It's long overdue, and I'm very happy to see that that's moving forward. We are working on the projects on the Hila first. The Hila Basin Irrigation Commission has secured some matching funds from ISC, and then we also have some state funds to provide the match. However, the, as I've discussed, which the three new ones haven't heard this, but the cost estimates have grown astronomically as we've moved through this. So we do have, it's in the millions, multi-millions on the Hila and probably that much on the members, but we're going to get the Hila knocked out first, and this is the formal step to get that moving forward. So I really appreciate your approval on that. Questions? Comments?
There's a long time coming. How long have we been going through? Three years?
So much for emergency.
So, you know, and I know we've talked, Scott has given us reports, our fire chief, but I'm a little concerned right now with, you know, the little rain we had the other day, just got soaked up so quick. But usually, our flooding's going to start. Are we ready? I mean, we're... Guess we're fixing stuff from so long ago. Are we ready to look at all this again? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you know my concerns. And then, you know, we come in, we do an emergency declaration, we do all that, and you know, I'm just... Yeah, never mind. Just, I guess we'll never be ready.
I don't know how you could possibly be ready for what the Hila would do, but we're doing our very best to put it back together from the last flood. And I would also mention that I did have the opportunity to meet with this contractor. They're doing a lot of work in Rio de Soto right now. They took me on site. I was able to see their projects, to see their work, and very pleased with the work that they do. They're very knowledgeable in all of the federal funding sources, whether it's NRCS, FEMA. That's what they do. So I'm very confident that we'll get it done and get it done right. Anything else on that?
Appreciate your effort sticking with us. There's a point, we talked about commission going to Santa Fe to have discussions with the emergency people, and it's just a long time coming that needed to be done. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item L, inventory deletion.
Chairman, Commissioner, before you is a 1997 Dodge van that the detention center had that is no longer needed and will be sold at auction with your approval. And then an old printer that doesn't work anymore that, at the time of the value, the threshold was a capital asset. Today, it wouldn't be considered one, but we need the approval to get these off our inventory list. Will stand for questions?
Item L, this is to award RFP 2508, the development of a community wildfire protection plan to H2O Partners. Scott's talked about this in his director report. We received two... Two proposals were submitted, one by H2O Partners and the other by SWCA Environmental Consultants. H2O Partners ranked higher, or scored higher by the evaluators, and it is staff's recommendation to award to H2O Partners. Do you want to add anything? Did I cover it? Any questions or comments? Moving on to agreements, item M, A2508, United States Department of Agriculture Work and Financial Plan. This is the Aethus Wildlife Services Contract. This agreement, all of the language remains the same from last year, so we had several rounds of negotiation last year to make sure that we were able to come to a consensus on what worked for USDA and then also met the desires of the commission at that time. So the language in the agreement remains the same. Can't talk to seem, I like to be. The only change is there is an increase of $1,150 in the personnel line item, and that's just due to increased costs of personnel. I would... I'd like to clarify for the public. So the total agreement is $93,000. Sixty-six percent of that is funded by federal appropriations, and 34% comes to the county. We receive usually, on a low here, about $12,000. We've seen as much as $18,000 in tailored grazing funds, which is what pays, is our portion to go towards this 34%. And then we budget that shortfall out of our general fund. That's what you saw in your prelim budget. That's the way that it's always been done. So I just want to clarify that it's 34% that comes here. Most of that comes from, or a good portion of that comes from tailored grazing fees, which by statute, you can only use for projects like this, services like this. We're bound by statute on what that can be used for. So I just want to clarify that. So it's staff's recommendation that we move forward with this agreement. So I'm sure you have some questions.
I have a question, I have a comment. I don't know if I heard you right, just verifying, 66% comes from the federal appropriations, correct? Only 34% comes from the county?
That is correct.
Okay. Is this a public document?
Yes, it is.
Are people able to get it? And how do they go about getting it? Do they judge the office?
They can get it off of our portal. It's... Anything that's on our agenda is public information, and they can submit an EPR request for the contract. They can submit, Mr. Griffin submitted an EPR request for the reports. We release those to them, so yes, it's public.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and one thing here, and I'm going to give you a little history here in a minute, but, you know, one thing that we had, and I'm not... I don't want to get into wordsmithing this or even negotiating this. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but one of my biggest things was the M44s in public land. I don't think M44s should be used. It's here. No M44s will be used. I don't think M44s should be used, it's here, no M44s will be used on public land. I think it's been spelt out pretty clear, so we don't have that discussion anymore with that. You know, when it comes to private land, you know, to me is, people, and I sort of said it a little earlier, you know, Grant County was built on farming, ranching, and mining. That is Grant County, this is why we all sit in Grant County. But when it gets into private lands with our ranchers trying to protect their cattle, whatever it is, if it's, you know, cattle, goats, whatever, to make a living, you know, I'm not going to be sitting up here telling them what to do on their property. I'm not, that, that's, that's why, it says here, no M44s will be used on public lands in Grant County. I can see people using their dogs, even though there is guidelines on how, even on private property, what they use as far as warning signs to warn people if they get onto private property accidentally, and, and all that, and I didn't want that on public land. But just to give you a little history, couple of years ago, two, three years ago, how long have you been a commissioner?
Three years.
So about four years ago, two of our commissioners were out ill, and this contract came, came in front of the board, we, two of us, one of them is myself, wasn't able to attend the meeting. This got voted down on a two to one vote, okay? As a commissioner, you have to respect what the vote was, whether we're here, whether we're not, and it was respected. I didn't like the way it happened, you know, I'd looked at it as an opportunity to, to vote it down, that's fine, still respect the vote, that's our job to respect each commissioner's vote. Eventually, what ended up happening, one of the commissioners started getting phone calls as to how bad we need these services, and wanted it back on the agenda, because it's not just what you hear here, that farmers, ranchers, that they use it, they're the only ones that use it. That's not the case, we have regular citizens, I think we had our fire department in, wasn't it, like by Bear Mountain, somewhere in that area? They had like $40,000 worth of damage, something like that, if I remember correct, because of certain woodpeckers, you know, you have people's schools that they used Wildlife Services for a lot. So we had to go back to our, our attorney, because, you know, as commissioners, just because we don't like how you vote on something or it gets turned down, it's not good practice, it shouldn't be allowed to just put it on there, because now you have the votes. We had to just have a discussion with our attorney to put it back on, and because of the need for it, it, it's, it's the need for it. You know, you hear public input, you heard the public input, so just keep that in mind, whatever decision you make, however you vote on this, it's totally up to you. I just want to give you the idea of, a lot of people use these services. You know, I have a lot of confidence in, in Mr. Jones, he's a professional, he does what he's supposed to do, we've even had compliments by someone doing a public speaking, you know, that they've taken steps to, you know, not just to go out there and kill animals, they've done certain things to do it. You know, this has always been, in my seven years, very controversial, I understand people, you know, I understand that, you know, those animals are part of Grant County and they have every right, they do, but sometimes they do become a nuisance. You know, they talk about killing coyotes, and I've said this before, a few, probably a couple of years ago, they stopped, you know, they put a law into effect about killing coyotes, and, and having the, you know, the groups or the coyote thing, you know, they go out and kill coyote contests, and, you know, I'm not saying it's right, I don't agree with it, I mean, just to go out there and, and shoot an animal for fun, I mean, if you're for food's different, but at the end of the day, they, you know, the state said no more. Now, we don't have a method of tracking how many coyotes are killed, because now these contests are all underground, and if you get out into the public areas where coyotes are on the weekends and you just drive around, you have a bunch of trucks bunched up, what are they doing? They're doing it, it didn't stop it, it, they just go underground, but we feel good about it, because there's a lot. You know, there's a lot about speeding, I speed, I've, you know, so, you know, these are the things we have to look at as commissioners, it, it's, and again, whatever you guys vote, that's up to you, I know what I'm going to vote on it, it's, we learned it, we saw it, last time it was voted down, it got back, brought back up because of certain things that happened, and how we use it, so that's just my two cents. Does anybody have anything else on it? Commissioner Stevens, hold on, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. So, so when I was running for county commissioner, I knew this was a controversial topic, so I tried to learn a little bit about it, and I guess I'm coming at it from the, the perspective of someone who appreciates the fact that ranchers work really hard and they're trying to protect their livelihood, you know, you can't fault anyone for that, and I'm also coming at it from a point of view of a conservationist and animal lover, and for a long time I thought, well, you know, killing animals through Wildlife Services, using taxpayer dollars, well, that doesn't sound good, but I, I did hear a presentation from the Southwest Environmental Center where they actually showed a study that in communities where they don't have Wildlife Services, more animals are killed, because people just take it into their own hands, you know, and so then there's no accounting, there's no transparency, and that doesn't seem, that seems worse, so, and, and I'm also interested to see the budget breakdown, I, I guess I hadn't fully appreciated that the county's cost is 31,650, and the federal contribution is 61,955. So when we hear the number 93,605, it's, that's not really our cost, that's, that's the full cost, but we're only paying a third of that. So at this point, I, I am in favor of it, and, but I, I always think we can improve, you know, maybe there's practices out there that other counties, other communities have found that, where they can minimize harm, you know, from, from these animals, from coyotes, where we can live in better balance, and, you know, let's try to learn from that, let's try to, let's try to use non-lethal means as the contract spells out wherever possible, so that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just have a couple of questions. I, I'm a rancher, so I have experienced losses from predators and so forth, I tried to get help through, through this contract in certain cases where it seemed extraordinary what those losses were like, but, and I know from experience that I didn't get them, because it's hard to get the permits and everything to be able to take action. Brandon Jones is very by the book, as far as what he can or can't do, from my experience, and I don't even know how much of this is Brandon versus other services, but I have a couple of questions for you. When, when we have bears and so forth come into town or around residences, or any other predators, lions, is this the first go-to place to help the community take care of those issues, and especially in a drought like right now, we've probably had several bears or lions coming into the community anyway?
Yes and no. So typically, if we receive a call about something like that, Fish and Wildlife is the one that gets called, if they have someone available, they send someone to remove that animal, but there has been numerous instances where they don't have someone available, and Brandon comes in and traps and removes that animal. So they, they work in conjunction, but this is not the first go-to, no.
You know, in the past, and I think Commissioner Flores will also, and I don't know how it's done now, but in the past, law enforcement would get a call, and it depends how close it is to the public, to the schools, et cetera, that they would let game and fish know they come in, they'll tranquilize them, put them into, and, and take them out, they do not kill them, harm them or anything, take them out into another area of the wilderness to keep them there. I don't know if that has changed any, but usually that has been the first step, because the first ones notified are usually law enforcement. Law enforcement, I think when I was there, we purchased rubber, rubber bullets, just in case, we didn't want to hurt them, but also we, we didn't want to sit there and let them hurt anybody till we got ahold of game and fish, and sometimes you scare them off that way, but I don't know if things have changed, but that's the way it used to be handled first, that was the first option.
So this could be an option depending on the circumstances, because I know Brandon really knows this stuff, and he can usually find, figure out a way to trap something if it, if, under, under almost any circumstance. Okay, well, that helped, and I, that makes sense. Let's see, just one, one other experience I'm aware of is where this comes into play, where, that I'm aware of, where, and I'll, I'll probably talk more about this in future meetings, but the, when they first released the wolves, of course, they don't, there, there was a wolf that came into the community, and, and Fish and Wildlife Service was very slow to respond to people asking them to come and capture the wolf, even though it wasn't up, you know, up in the wilderness or something. And it turned out that these services actually saved that wolf's life, because the wolf ended up getting caught in a life trap, and then the Fish and Wildlife Service came and took the wolf. So I know there's a lot of concern on, controversy on both sides of this, but hopefully we can get information, I, I mean, I'm even ignorant about these, about these things, because I simply haven't been much involved in, in trying to receive services, or, or understanding how often or what animals end up being dealt with under these services, but I know there's both good and, and controversial issues that come up with it, but overall, it seems like... Well, well, let me ask this one question, because it's been portrayed that, well, all of this goes to contract with one individual, is that true?
No, the contract is with USDA. Brian, or Brian, Brandon Jones provides the majority of the time, but if you look at the reports that we send out to you, you will see that there are other names on that, and so occasionally, you know, Brandon might work in Sierra County, Brandon might work in Hidalgo County, we might have someone else that comes in and works in Grant County, so we pay for the service. Brandon provides the majority of that here, but he is not the only operator.
Yeah. All right, thank you, I don't have any other questions this time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anybody else?
To Mr. Stevens.
I already made a comment, but just to follow up to that, there, in public comment, there was an implication that there could be a conflict of interest, that if someone is gaining from their position by knowing where bears and mountain lions are, and then they can basically sell that information to private hunters and, and get money for that. I, I mean, that certainly isn't the appearance that, of transparency, but I would think that as a county employee or a contractor, there's probably some conflict of interest rules, or, I don't know, I guess I'm just curious how we can reassure the public that that, you know, that we take that seriously, and we don't want our contractors to abuse their position for personal gain.
You, you know, I think, and, and I think that, that's just, to me, that's just throwing something else in there, because I, you know, half of these guides outfitters, if they're around here, it's because they lease the land, so there's a, the land is leased that they work out of, as far as guiding hunters, you know, I don't see a conflict, because Brandon doesn't know where his next call's going to be, you know, it could be closer here, they're not working the wilderness, most of these guides are working out of their, their leased lands, and the reason they lease the lands is because they know what's in that land and, and the animals that they're hunting, but I, I, I'd heard that comment, but I don't, I, I feel comfortable that that's not happening, I really do, because I, I don't think you're going to see Brandon, you know, whatever his business is, is there, and if you look, my son's a guide, he guides people mostly in the wilderness, not so much around here, so. I, I don't see it, but that's a good question, maybe they can look into, I don't know what to tell you. I, I don't see it fitting in, in that, you know, because if they land, for example, they lease land from Freeport, or they lease land from, it's not really Freeport, whatever the ranch is called, you know, it's, it's, that's where they, they usually do that, so. I don't know if that helps any, but I, I see the concern, but I don't, I don't see that conflict there, I really don't.
Yeah, and I guess now that you mention it, it, logistically, that it doesn't seem like, like you said, you don't know where your next call's going to be, and so you're not going to just turn around immediately and say, oh, there's a mountain lion in this area, you know, by the time that would happen, the mountain lion would have moved on, so, okay, thanks for helping me think through that.
I don't know if I gave you the right answer, but that's, I, I mean, I, yeah, anyway. Anything else? Anything else on this topic? All right.
Moving on to item O, Agreement A2509, this is for the fiscal year 26 RISE scope of work. They received a $350,000 reward, and this would be approval to accept the scope of work and the funds. It will continue the same RISE programs that Joseph reports on, so didn't change much. Questions?
No.
Moving on, item P, Amendment Number Two to the Inmate Medical and Behavioral Health Services at Grant County Detention Center, this is Amendment Number Two, this is renewing the contract with Roadrunner Health for an additional year. The other item that you will see in there is the formal addition of the dental services, and this is at the request of Board and NDAZOLA. We have found that that provides a cost savings to be able to offer dental in the facility rather than transporting, we have to transport to DIMM for dental. Any questions or comments on that? Moving on to resolutions, item Q, R2538, a resolution designating the location of Election Day polling places for all statewide elections conducted in '26, '27, and appointing the board of registration members for the county. Clerk Levine?
For the commissioners, we have to present to you the 26, 27 polling locations. We're continuing with the five polling locations on Election Day, as well as our two early voting locations, which are in our office, in the county clerk's office, and the Bear Community Center, as well as our early, or our board of registration members, that are our five with our alternatives, and that's what I present to you. Any questions? Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Hovin, our county clerk, are there any changes being proposed in this?
No. No, there are regular five polling locations that are used on Election Day, and there are two early voting locations.
Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Clerk. Sorry, are you done?
Yes.
So I've never seen this, but at the end of your memo there, it says, "Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners hereby appoints the following five voters to meet the qualifications of subsection B," and I'm not going to get into serving the Board of Registration. Were voting on that, too?
Correct.
And who says those are the people that are going to be on there?
These are the five that have appointed, have submitted letters to be on the Board of Voter Registration.
So do we, as commissioners, mean that we vote on this, get to look at these letters, or what they do? And where do we look at them?
In our office.
And can we change them, if we decide to change them? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Medina, go ahead.
Quick question, Election Day's what day? May you had a discussion regarding some issues at the Baird Community Center. Did those get resolved?
Correct. They are currently working on the Baird Community Center.
Can we at least follow up at least two weeks before, or a month before, so make sure that they are resolved prior to the voting day?
Yes.
I hate for somebody to get hurt, because we need to take care of issues, at least.
Yes, yes.
That's why I'm asking the Election Day, that's when they resolve.
It's November 1st.
Okay, just so I can push the City of Bay as well, to make sure that we're taking care of it.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Yeah, go ahead, you're the boss.
Because I don't understand the Board of Registration either, and you say they submit letters. How, how do you solicit from the public these letters?
We published it in the newspaper.
When, and how often?
We published it in the early part of May.
And what determines the breakdown in the number of Democrats versus number of Republicans? Is that based on the number of registered voters, or how do you determine that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Can we, does it have to be approved? Do we look until a little bit more Thursday, or can it be moved up?
Well, we have to have it within this upcoming month, and usually the members that we, we have are the members that we previously had, so.
So if the Commission wanted more information, we could table this to the end of the month, and we would still be okay?
As long as we have them by the end of the month, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Flores?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, just a question regarding, did anybody else submit a letter that was rejected?
No.
So these are the only letters that you received?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Okay. But...
You guys can stop by our office if you have any questions.
Yeah, no, because I do, and I'm just saying, if, if, as a board, I'm talking as a whole board, we decide, I mean, do we have enough time to open it up for other people to put in letters?
Yeah, because we, we submitted it in the paper, it was in the newspaper.
Okay. All right, anything else? Thank you.
Next, item R, Resolution R 2539, a budget adjustment request.
Chairman and Commissioners, this bar is because a year ago, the clerk received a cybersecurity grant when the revenue came in. It was allocated to her fund instead of to this grant fund. So this is just a reclassification of her revenue to her grant, and then to increase the expenditures for the Cori Caminos buses that were approved in last month's session. And I'll stand for any questions.
Good, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Board of Finance to hear the county investments presentation from Patrick Kahn, the Treasurer. I did send you some information in statute, and also a section out of the County Commissioner handbook that explained your role and the joint role between the Treasurer and the Commission as it relates to county investments. So at the Chairman's request, Mr. Kahn will be on the agenda on Thursday. Any questions on that?
I do.
Sure, go ahead.
So looking at the account summary, it talks about Morgan Capital, Stifel, and LGIP. Do we have contracts with these three individual groups that were investing money in them?
Yes, there are. There is a contract with Morton, or an agreement with Morton, and an agreement with Stifel. This is something that is a conversation that I'm going to have to have with elected officials that's recently, keeps coming up, is elected officials go out and sign these investment, or these agreements, and then when they have trouble with these contractors doing what they're supposed to do, then they need help fixing it. Well, either Ben or myself, or both of us, have never seen the agreement, they just sign it. So that's going to have to change in the future, and that's probably a resolution that I'm working through in my mind, that I will put in front of you, that brings those type of agreements in front of the Commission, so that we're all aware of what's going on. LGIP stands for Local Government Investment Program, and that is through the state. And so that money, there is no agreement there. That's something that's created in statute, and you can...
If you look at it, it just kind of looks like it's all the same thing. There's three contractors that we're working with, but why three, or why two? Do you have center practice?
We had three at one point, and that was news to me as well. So these are questions that I think you should ask the Treasurer on Thursday, as to why we have two, what his rationale is for having two. Or in recent occasions, we've had three. I've never in my career seen three. I've had this conversation with him, he had rationale for that, but I think you should ask him that on Thursday.
I'm just curious, Commissioner, this is the first time I've seen something like this. I'm just really curious as to why the two. It's got to be a good conversation with, with Treasurer. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. And anybody else? So this one, again, I'm going to have to close, just like we used to do, whatever. We, we're the House Counsel, just same, same process? Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Commissioners, do you guys have anything on any of the items that were discussed? Okay, Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Medina, do you have a report?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Flores, do you have a report?
Mr. Chair, I'm not a report, just a follow up to your comments earlier. I'll save it in for my report. I'll report more on, at the meeting on Thursday. But I do agree with you, and I want to reiterate your comments regarding Tucasa. It is concerning, I, I know it seems like we would, we're, it's not, we are losing services. I know in one meeting, the county manager mentioned that I think we've been working on Tucasa for the last 10 years, give or take, with regards to services for behavioral health, drug abuse here in Grant County, and I think the time has come that you as a Commission make a decision and move forward, because I would not be surprised, based on the circumstances that have happened lately, that Tucasa would try to end their services with us before, before we do something, and, and move their resources. I hear from different folks in the community about the concern with Tucasa. I've seen the letters, as everybody else has. I know that the CEO has probably distanced himself from staff at Tucasa, basically saying, you know, it's your job, not my job, to make this work. It's just, it's concerning about the senior centers, obviously, and I'm glad to hear that services will not stop, no matter what happens, and they'll get fed. And like Commissioner Medina said in one of his meetings, some of these folks just look forward to that couple hours of socialization, because that's all they have. And I know as a county commission, we're not going to let that service end, but I do agree with the Chair that we as a Commission need to move forward with Tucasa and look at another company, take it over, because 10 years has been a long time. I don't want this to be, after my tenure here on this Commission, that the Commission is still talking about this, saying, now it's been 20 years, and nothing has happened, because all we're doing is hurting our constituents and the citizens here in Grant County by not doing something. The time has come to do something, and I think we as a Commission owe it to those folks at Tucasa serving, and we do something. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Shelley, do you have anything?
Yes. So as I mentioned, we've had a couple of great community events, real open dialogue with PNM, and then also with our, all of our resources for wildfire management, and I thought it was well-attended, and I appreciated everyone who presented there and, and took the hard questions and dealt with them. I'm, also, I attended a New Mexico cattle growers' meeting, where I learned more about the wolf situation that both Arizona and New Mexico counties, where wolves are concentrated, are, are released, and what they're experiencing. And the only thing I wanted to ask, or offer to members of the Commission, if you want more information from people and, and the counties involved in that, where, where they're having a bigger impact, there's a website that's been established to share information called Wolves Among Us. And I had asked for more information. I was told, well, we're putting that together, and a lot of that is now available there. So anyway, it's, it'll just give you an appreciation for what that experience is like for those communities, from their perspective. So anyway, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelley. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to add to the conversation about Tucasa, that I know at a previous meeting, we discussed possible actions when it was an agenda item, and one of the actions that I'm in favor of was to send a letter to HMS asking for their response about their ability to honor the terms of the contract and fulfill the mission, and also part of that is asking for more information, more detail about the financial capacity to do that. And I think after that discussion, we tabled it. So I don't know procedurally how we, how we bring that back to where we could move forward with that letter, but I, I would like to see if we can do that.
So at that meeting, you, your commission directed Ben mine to... Send that letter. Ben drafted that letter, sent that to me last week. I, I need to follow up with him. We were addressing the senior centers and Tucasa in that. I don't know, I don't know how relevant it is to ask for, what we were asking for was two years of, of, what we talked about was two years of their in-kind services, and really, has it relates to those. I don't know if the senior center data is even helpful at this point, but I haven't got that sent yet. It's on my, it's on my desktop, and I need to talk with him to see if we should modify that or just ask for everything.
That, that makes a lot of sense, thank you. I thought we had agreed to do the letter, but then I remember in the same conversation talking about tabling the issue, so I, I was confused. But thank you for your work on the letter, and it seems like it would make sense to focus it just on Tucasa, in light of the decision with the senior centers. You think everything, just keep it like it was?
Okay.
I don't want to interrupt you. Your turn there, but I'm like dying over here.
That, that's all I have from my question.
Then that makes my job easier. I'll leave it like it is and send it out as it's written, so. It'll go out.
No, the reason, and this is a reason, I mean, it's a great idea. I would totally understand the, to me, I think, you know, everything we've done up here, everything we do up here, all the discussions we have is for the betterment of our constituents, for our healthcare, for everything else, and, and that's what I alluded to earlier. You know, one person, it, to me, is, is more, you know, over the, the healthcare in our community, it's disturbing to me. But, you know, some of the stuff that I would really like to see in that letter, and what we had discussed still is, you know, we're getting told we're going to stop these services. Well, I think we had an email that said, senior center, one of them $102,000, one of them $114,000 in salaries, Santa Clara $156, plus $33,000 in fringe benefits. I still haven't gotten anything from the town of Silver City. I haven't asked Alex, I'd ask somebody else for it to see, but, you know, when you're looking at, and I know everybody has heard this from me, but I'm telling you, this is why I want this, the senior centers on there, is you're probably looking at over $500,000 in salaries in four senior centers, and you're telling me, we can't make these senior centers work? I know Santa Clara, the information I got, I'm trying to remember off the top of my, they had like one six-hour employee, one four-hour employee, maybe one eight-hour employee. So a lot of the questions that I've pretty been, been getting from the community is, you know, is somebody in, in the director, of course, he, he's going to make more money, but still, over $500,000 in salary just doesn't sit right with me. The other piece to this is, if you're going to put some, and this is why I sort of wanted to look into in the investigation, what I really want to look, looked into is, if you're saying people are working, or you have people working at the senior center and doing work for this, I'd like for them to work on it full-time, not eight hours possible. I'm not saying this is happening, this is what I want to find out, because this is what I've heard, is not one person working one day on the senior centers, and then the other four days on, you know, HMS stuff. So that's why I'm telling you, I'd like to see it go all the way through with, with both parties on it, because it is, you know, basically, it is state money.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the letter is related to our agreements, and that is the in-kind services that they provide, so we can get that, and we could submit it, Evra or Voia for that, but...
Well, can we do, and then from this other stuff, and then, then I agree with Commissioner Stevens, just take out the HMS stuff, and, right, I mean, senior center stuff, I don't know. I just get, you know, I like answers, you know, especially when it comes to taxpayer money, and doing, Commissioner Flores, do you have something to say?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. One last question, on you bringing up the senior centers and the letters, or their request to, to HMS, I would like to add in that letter is, I know for a fact that they have grant monies received for the operation of the senior centers. My question to the CEO and HMS leadership is, now that they've terminated the leases with senior centers, what are their plans to do with that grant money? Because I know it's significant money that they received. I would like to know what they're planning to do with that grant money that they still have to be spent, because they do have grant money. And if they're going to terminate, what are their plans with that? I just was told that they have some grant money, that they're trying to spend before the lease is up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess I'll go on my report, sorry to interrupt your stuff, so. You know what, I just want to give a good, you know, thank you, and, and, uh, thank everyone, and thank our... our community. This last weekend, we had a rodeo going on, and then we had Fiesta Latina. I think that was, that was great. I appreciate the work that was done to hold the rodeo, and everybody that put the Fiesta Latina together. And to me, I look at this because it's great for our community to have certain things that they're able to go to, but not only that, I mean, this represents our whole county, and it represents what our county was built on, and the diversity and the things. And then sooner, here soon, we're probably gonna have the Native American Pow Wow. We do that. I'm really happy with how Grant County and all the different groups are representing what Grant County is about, you know, and I've said it up here a million times, you know. A lot of people like to use, don't forget where we come from. You know, don't ever forget where you come from, you know. But if you look at Grant County, the things that are put out there for our citizens to attend, is part of that, not forgetting where you come from. You know, a lot of people don't like for, you know, and that's a lot, some people don't like, Grant County was built on farming, ranching, and mining. There's a lot of mines out here, yes, and we struggling with the state to get some of those covered up. Those are the things that we can't forget, where we came from. So I really appreciate everybody that's putting these things on. I was real happy this weekend. We had visitors from up north, and they really enjoyed it. They enjoyed being out at the Fiesta Latina, they enjoyed the rodeo. So, thank you, Charlene, thank you, everybody, for doing that. That was awesome. That's great. You know, I think the other report that I was gonna give was part of that, with the, with what the emails that I've gotten, and the little thing on June 12th, but I'll drop that. I think everybody understands where it come from, that, as far as our senior centers at Tucasa. So we'll go from there. But, and commissioners, I really appreciate one thing, and I have to tip my hat off to Commissioner Stevens. I really enjoy her on mine, and I really enjoy what she looks at. I, you know, one of the comments you made on the wildlife services is, and I've made it, you can go back to my meetings during this time, you're not gonna stop, you're not gonna stop a rancher of taking care of his livelihood. You're not. You know, what you said is awesome, is, at least we're giving them the tools. Because, you know, to me, if somebody's taking their livelihood, they're gonna get in their trucks and whatever, and they're gonna take care of what they need to take care of to protect their livelihood. And that's one of the points I've made for many years, is the systems in place. This is why I sort of bring in the coyote contest. You know, I wish I would have sanctioned it a little better, or done whatever, put laws to it, because now, there is no control of it, and everything's underground on those. So, but I appreciate you, Commissioner Stevens, I really do. And that's all of my comments, I think, unless you guys have anything else. Nothing? You're ready to go, huh?